This time I would like to call the orders of National Rocky Mount Board of Education. This time please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Davis, would you lay this in a pledge of allegiance?
Certainly.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, one liberty, and the free and healthy of all. Entertaining a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
As my Mr. Davis to adopt the agenda, second by Mr. Dunn. Anybody object? Entertaining a motion to approve the board minutes?
Well, well, hold on, I'm sorry, aren't you going to get a motion to amend the agenda to add a closed session?
Yes. Yes. Yes, I make the motion we amend the agenda for a closed session. Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Edwards, approve that, not her. Mr. Biz. Mr. Sharp. Mr. Dunn.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jenkins.
Yes.
Mr. Silver.
Yes.
Ms. Washington.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Motion made and approved, adopt the agenda as amended. Entertaining a motion to approve the board minutes. Motion by Mr. Biz, second by Mr. Edwards. Oh. Anybody object to that? We will approve that at the end of the action item.
All right, so if, I'm sorry Franklin, so if we're going to proceed in that way, which I, I do think makes sense, then we would not actually get motions now. You would just ask if anybody objects to, to the item, with the idea being that we'll get a single motion um at the end of the action items for all of those uh action items that would have otherwise been unanimous.
All right, thank you. Recognitions, Dr. Catalano.
Good evening, um Chair Lamb, Vice Chair Washington, and Dr. Ellis. Uh we have three sets of recognitions um for you tonight. Uh Ms. Christie Grant, our exceptional children's director, was selected by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction for the Exceptional Children Division Distinguished Service Award. She was one of five individuals selected to receive this prestigious award in recognition for her commitment, dedication, and significant contributions she has made to the education of students with disabilities over many years. Congratulations, Ms. Grant. The following Nash Rocky Mount Public School teachers are being recognized for being selected by North Carolina Department of Public Instruction for their excellence in teaching advanced placement, international baccalaureate, and CTE instruction, and teaching students who either received a score of three or higher on the College Board Advanced Placement Exam, received a score of four or higher on the International Baccalaureate Course Exam, or received an industry certification or credential from our Career and Technical Education Department. From Nash Central High School, Carolyn Trull, Jessica Horn, Michelle Sykes, Rennie Taylor, Andy Brown, Glenda Davis, Gwen Turner, Sandra Catrel Dunn, Jeffrey Mizell, Dawn Williams, Karen Winston. From Northern Nash High School, Nee Jones, Susan Leonard, Jackie Pridgen, Ashley Davis, Bethany Thornell, Brian Taylor, Sherry Barwick, Jenity Clayton, Robert O'Brien, and Thomas Barkalow. From Rocky Mount High School, Elizabeth Reynolds, Natalie Shook, Angela Powell, Cassie Anderson, Christie Capoletti, Jeffrey Lucas, Dana Wiggins, Paul Halloman, Ellison Gerard, Jeremy Golding, Juan Hormazabal, Amanda McCray, Michael Morris, Jeffrey Pejo, Claudia Buenrostro, and Corey De Jong. From Southern Nash High School, Brian Hendricks, Delaina Perry, Elizabeth Bridges, Carrie Akok, Tiffany Clark, Crystal Kennedy, Ellison Phillips, and Penny Worles. Congratulations to these high school teachers for achieving excellence in high school instruction. If you recall, um in our, our last face-to-face meeting, we recognized all of those elementary and middle school teachers. This is the high school um version of that similar recognition. I hate that they couldn't be with us tonight to come up here and receive those. We do have certificates that we will be sending to um these teachers as well. Um in our final recognition for tonight, the Nash Rocky Mount Public Schools Finance Department recently received a certificate of excellence in financial reporting for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended on June 30th, 2019. This certificate of excellence was presented by the Association of School Business Officials International. Congratulations to our finance department.
Thank you, Dr. Catalano. This time, this is part of the input. We do not have any public input tonight, so we're due to approval of consent agenda, Ms. Washington.
All right, so Rod, can that be, is that going to be deferred to the end, or can I go ahead and um make that motion for the consent agenda?
No, you would just ask, um, um, I'm sorry, um, the chair would just ask if wanted anybody objects to the consent agenda, and then if not, it would just be one of the open session items approved at the end.
Does anybody object to the consent agenda? Go to business items, communications, planning, and engagement, Dr. Catalano.
Good evening again. Um, the Policy Committee um has got twelve proposals um before you tonight for a first read. Um, there is one district-initiated new policy. There is one district-initiated policy revision of that new policy, and there are ten North Carolina School Board Association policy um revisions. The Nash Rocky Mount Board of Education Policy Committee recommends the acceptance of the, these policies for first read to sit for thirty days.
Anybody object to the policy proposal?
Uh, the, the second set of policies we have before you tonight are six policies from the North Carolina School Board Association that were approved for first read at our last meeting, and the Nash Rocky Mount Board of Education Policy Committee recommends the acceptance of these policies for final approval.
Anybody object to the personnel recommendations, I mean, excuse me, policy proposal for final read? Thank you, Dr. Catalano.
Thank you.
Any resources, Mr. Chris?
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Ellis, and members of the board. I am requesting your approval of Personnel Action Report as recommended in closed session.
Does anybody object to the action report? Thank you.
Can we just make that as revised in closed session?
Yes, as amended to closed session, I'm sorry.
That's fine, thank you.
Now Personnel Recommendations for Information.
Um, the, the only um report for approval will be the action report.
Okay, does anybody object to the action report? Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Facilities, Mr. Davis.
Good evening. Uh, the first item is the Cummins Corporation contract. Cummins was contracted in January 2020 for a twelve-month period, hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. This fee was to assist in site selection, procurement of design firm, and design and bid phase management services. Cummins has been paid nine thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars for siting and site selection for the new elementary school. Cummins was not involved in the procurement process for design services. Cummins was sent an email on March 4th not to incur any further expenses until further notice. Fiscal implications, there's a hundred fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and one dollars left on the contract, and if directed to close the purchase, all of the balance will be placed in the capital outlay fund balance. Recommendation, the superintendent recommends the board terminate the Cummins contract and direct staff to work with the design firm moving forward.
Mr. Davis, any objections to the Cummins Corporation contract?
Second item is the Northern Nash High Phase Two paving contract. Main points, a pre-bid was conducted on April 15th at Northern Nash High School for the Phase Two paving of the remaining parking lots. Bon Hill Contracting, Garris Paving, uh Grading and Paving, and Weaver's Asphalt, and Maintenance Company submitted bids as shown in the attached bid document. Bon Hill Contracting Company submitted the low bid of a hundred twenty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-six dollars. The project will be funded from the 2020-2021 capital outlay paving and gravel account. Superintendent recommends the contract be approved to Bon Hill Contracting Company for the amount of a hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars.
Any objections to the paving contract?
Hundred twenty-seven, five ninety-seven.
Hey, Davis?
Nine fifty-seven, I read that wrong, that is correct. The third contract is Southern Nash High HBAC contract. A pre-bid was conducted on February 13th at Southern Nash High School Gymnasium for the replacement of the HBAC system. Southern Piping, Carolina Commercial Systems, Pemberton, Standard Electrical Mechanical, all submitted bids as shown in the bid document. Pemberton submitted the low bid of one eighty-six, five ninety-seven. Project will be funded from the 2020-2021 capital outlay HBAC account. Superintendent also recommends approval of the contract at Pemberton for the amount of one eighty-six, five ninety-seven.
Any objections to the HBAC contract? Thank you, Mr. Davis. School Nutrition, Ms. Miller?
So I'm here tonight to seek approval for the renewal bids for school nutrition. This is the final year of the bidding process, and this is all rollover with no change in fee or in expense.
Any objections to the school nutrition bids? Any questions, Ms. Jack?
Evening, again. Um, board members. I am here to present the third set of amendments for budget amendments for 2019-20 budget. Um, this is for strategic priority five, transparent organization of culture, effective use of resources. Nash Rocky Mount Schools will exhibit excellence in financial and facility planning, management, and stewardship. The main points are, the amendments are revisions uh for the budget received after the April 20th board meeting. The financial implications, it allows, having these budget adjustments allows us to stay current with our budget to actuals all the um on a regular basis. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the funding revisions, budget adjustments, including amendment number three as presented.
Any objections to the amendments? Thank you, Ms. Jack. Insurance.
Okay, um, this is the year, the, the final month of our fiscal year, and June, July 1st, we will see renewals for all of our insurance policies. And this, um, what you have received is the renewal for the workers' comp policy, which is on page four, gives you the renewal rate, it gives you the current rate that we have right now of a hundred ninety-three thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars. And then the um renewal premium, annual premium, is a hundred seventy-five thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Um, and it could change, reduce based on the desk audit when, when that occurs. So, um, the superintendent is requesting approval of this um renewal policy.
Anybody object to the insurance renewal policy? Question. Savvas Learning System, formerly known as Pearson Contract, Mr. Thompson.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Ellis. Tonight, I present to you the instructional contract for Savvas Learning, formerly known as Pearson Learning. This contract is in the amount of one hundred seventy thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. The contract covers core resources, services for grades nine through twelve, English and Math, for the 2020-21 school year. The superintendent is requesting approval for this item.
Any objections to the Savvas Learning contract? Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Student Services, Mr. Farro. Count of dates.
Yeah, she can't.
Ms. Griffin.
She can't get connected, so we're doing it a different way.
There seems to be. Tremaine, can you do it a different way, Chris?
Yes.
Tremaine?
Yes.
I'm in.
Um, say that again, sir.
I said I'm in.
Okay, all right.
I did, Mr. Lamb?
Yes, sir.
I did not have any updates for student services tonight.
Hey, thank you. Counter update, Ms. Griffin.
You can call me, she wants me to call her, all right, I got her. Oh, okay. Okay. Hello, Robin? Uh, we're going to share screen real quick? All right, your own, Robin?
Here?
Yes. Yes.
You have another?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, and I have three things tonight, I apologize for you to keep saying I have nothing put in the group, so I don't know what I'd say. Can I share my screen from here?
Yes.
Will you hear you, Ms. Griffin?
If you will just display the, the calendar presentation, I'll go through it.
Okay.
Getting a big delay, but um basically I'm going to go through the legislative, um, 2019, uh, 2019 legislation calendar changes for 2021. Um, I want to make perfectly clear that this is only for the 2021 school year at this point, not for years past that. This is related to the special 2020 dash three until seven of four. Uh, calendar adjustments, the name of the input, often from the department, and then we'll go to the second slide, please. So, in the slide, in the second slide, this is the standard legislative calendar guidance. Uh, this is the information that we look at every year. The items that are highlighted in the coral are ones that will subsequently change. Um, Houseville seven of four, seven of four. This is a quick reminder, generally schools cannot start in August, from six, and has to come closer to later than the Friday, the first Friday in June. It has to cover nine calendar months. It has to have a hundred eighty-five days of instruction or the ten twenty-five hours. It has to have at least nine teacher workdays, uh, two off workdays, and two on vacation day. The same legal holidays as those designated by the state from the off commission, those for mom's holiday, and Wednesday has to be a holiday. Teachers must work two hundred and fifteen days of overtime. In state reason, that step minimum testing must take place the last five days of semester and Wednesday of a non. Uh, the field, the health field, and the official law references are at the bottom of that slide.
Good night.
The next slide, please. So, in the next, I have to do the same thing, the nineteen calendar legislation guidelines on the field seven of four. Um, it makes necessary, the guidance from the FBI and around this legislation, it makes it necessary to judge a death to the general or approve twenty-two, four, and a calendar, make other departments option. The same better in last, the ones that change.
Cover head.
Five, we have eleven days, as well as five additional hours. First instructional day may be no earlier than June seventeenth, I mean, I'm sorry, August seventeenth. And the last instructional day may be later than June eleventh, twenty-one. Five embedded remove instructional day may be scheduled within the calendar, and those may be existing workday. Those days cannot start prior to August twenty-fourth. Also, there's a, there's a small note at the bottom, had, if it's a state of emergency or disaster, some hurricane, or a snup storm, or those happening, and physical closures are required, and convert it on those days, as well as the most hurting day. So if you'll go to the next slide, please. You'll see on this slide, the traditional calendar, that's for our traditional schools, and really all of our schools with the exception of you'll see the original calendar that you have opened in February of 2018, on a 2021 school year. And then you'll see the revised calendar that simple office staff and principals help create on the rock. You'll notice that uh there have been various changes except for to meet the requirements of the, uh, Housefield seven of four. The school year will start a week earlier, um, so that we have now cut out a week worth of workdays at the beginning of the year. Workdays will begin on the tenth, and the first day of school will be the seventeenth. For most of the rest of that first semester, nothing changed, with the exception of adding in a um remote learning day, we're calling that one, we have our practice day in September, it will be September twenty-eighth. October twenty-fourth, which is already the workday, been the learning for the learning day. And then nothing in, in the middle part, we still will change. In February, we did add a Monday. In February, we converted a workday to a learning day. March, we did the same thing, and nothing after that changed. Next slide, please. So for the early college, high school, and understinking high, we did the same thing, we converted the original calendar that was in the five, the whole quarter sector in eighteen. There's the same necessary adjustments, you can take, you have to kind of process where we get a practice day in September, what we're not for that one day, we converted some workdays that were already in place to cover the remote learning day. Add a couple even. The last slide, please. So you can see here what changed, moved the traditional calendar, moved the uh a mandatory workday, it's originally optional. It's become a mandatory workday, so everybody's being in the building together on Thursday at school. Thursday at school transition to the seventeen twenty-four. Five of the learning days were added, one was added for previous workday that was five. We added early days on and there were random here. For the city, the city high and early college, August third and fourth became enjoy workdays. The first day of school was through August twelfth to August sixth. That could learning days were identified, three were added, two were previous workdays, and all those three included. This is for information, please for the board. Any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Griffin? Thank you, Ms. Griffin, now we give a request for participation in research.
I can send a request for research this time. Um, one is with the college board. Um, the one Carolina, um, construction of NC seven. Um, this one is for private colleges. It will be working with guidance counselors at the schools to provide um information about the reading pass. And this other one was from Mr. Derek Black, he is now a senior early college principal leadership, and he will be working with Ms. Not actually, not collaborating, Mr. Sharp at early college, to do his, his visitation. Need information on the, any requests, please?
Any questions, Ms. Griffin? Any questions, Ms. Griffin? Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you.
Just want to thank the high schools, uh, graduation was here last week, Wednesday, Friday and Saturday. Just want to thank them for their, uh, diligence because it was definitely didn't get a one day graduation shot. Um, we'd like to thank your students. Basically technology staff are doing a great job. Presently, I want to just bring up the state, uh, based on the COVID legislation, uh, we are to devise a remote learning plan. That'll be due July twentieth, I'll have some information about that coming out. Also, there is some jumpstart legislation, which has something to do with a summer school plan. Each school system is created a plan, it's related to the pressing needs and K five. Those are affected by the pandemic, so that is a plan being started. There's also a reentry plan, I will get a template this week, hopefully from the state about where we start with the reentry plan of next school year. So I will send that information soon, I, uh, get that, um, but I believe it's going to include certain levels, so just be ready. I'll share that with, hopefully by Friday I'll have something out. And next, um, the district plan is being created now, uh, we've started compiling surveys with all stakeholders. We're going to be focusing hopefully on proficiency, achievement gap, school growth and equity. So I'll have some of that started, uh, I believe this Washington was on that, uh, committee. We'll start getting some of that information for you and hopefully we'll have a retreat in the summer if we can meet and start describing, uh, the district plan. What I've done is I've shared some links with you in the, uh, about top tens of COVID and the state just for some information items. Um, but I had to get from there. This time I'd like to thank everybody for the hard work you went in for graduation and all the hard work over at Central Office trying to get things put back together and continue to go forward. Um, I do not have, we do not have a meeting in July. But I want everybody, in, in the past, we've had a call meeting in July. And I'm sure we'll probably need to meet before August. I know July fourth falls on the first Saturday. Um, we need to think about dates that will be good for the majority of the board members to attend. I know this is vacation time, people got plans, but, um, we need to look at the dates that we could have a possible call meeting instead of waiting until the last minute to call one. So the Mondays are July sixth, thirteenth, twentieth and twenty seventh. So if you were thinking about those dates and email me, then I will contact what the majority of the board wishes to have instead of sitting here debating back and forth now. I, I hope everybody will continue to have or want to have the meeting on Monday nights. They are the four Monday nights of July, whatever's the most convenient for the most majority. Well, if we had to have a call meeting, that's when we will schedule. Any question? Next.
So, so we do need to get that motion though to approve all of the action items.
I'm gonna read the when the next scheduled meeting is and then approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The next scheduled meeting for August work session is August third. And the regular board meeting is Monday, August third at seven o'clock. This time I will entertain a motion to approve all the adoption items tonight. Mr. Edwards made the motion, second by.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bullitt. Ms. Chavis is not here, Mr. Edwards. Agree with your motion?
Yes.
I agree with the motion, Mr. Visser?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp? Mr. Sharp?
Okay.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes, sir.
I support the motion.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Silver?
Yeah.
Ms. Washington? Ms. Bullitt?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. This time I will entertain a motion to go back into closed session. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven, sub-sections A one and A three and A six to prevent the disclosure of confidential files under General Statute one fifteen C dash three twenty-one. To consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual's employee to prevent the disclosure of confidential student records under General Statute one fifteen C dash four oh two and to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve attorney's right. Motion by Mr. Visser and have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Edwards, all in favor, Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Visser? Mr. Sharp? Mr. Dunn?
Support.
Mr. Jenkins? Mr. Silver?
Yes.
Ms. Washington? Ms. Bullitt?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Motion carried, we will now go into closed session. Entertaining will come out of closed session.
Do you need DeNita to stay? No, nobody. Do you need Joyce to stay? Or DeNita, okay, so then just everybody goes down. Dr. Ellis, right.
And, and, Mr. Lamb, I think that you could let the public know that, um, when the board comes out of closed session, there will not, other than adjourning, there will not be any action items.
I gotta get Ron.
I said, I think you could let the public know that they're following the meeting, that when the board comes out of closed session, there will not be any action items.